It's 6:30. I hereby call this workshop to order and we'll get right down to it. Tonight, we're going to talk about short-term rentals in Peachtree City. First, I'd like to start by hearing from staff as far as where we are right now, where things stand. This isn't our first rodeo. It's not our first or even our second conversation about short-term rentals, but I feel good tonight about hearing from our citizens and council coming to some conclusions at the end of the evening. So with that, we'll start with staff.
Great. I will kick you off here. Just a brief overview of what we'll talk about and then I will get out of the way and let you all do your work. So first, we'll go over the current status and timeline of the process, how we got here. Then I'll give you some summary of some additional information that we've gathered since our last discussion in November. And then I will get out of your way and let you deliberate on the next steps. As a reminder, we started this in April of 2022. We had a council staff topics item in June of '22 and a workshop, a full dedicated workshop in May of '23, and again in June of 2023. In August, council voted to proceed with a public hearing and adoption of the ordinance that was drafted at that point. In September, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and then they tabled the item so that they were able to further digest it and deliberate on it in October of 2023. And then in November 16th, you all held a public hearing, at which point you decided that that current draft was not the correct solution at that time. And so just a reminder is, at this point, we really do have a blank slate and there is no draft that's being considered at this specifically right now. So since November, we did post a public opinion survey on the city website. It was open from January 6th all the way through February 28th and we had over 1,000 participants. That does, that number is actually reflective of the removal of duplicates that are, that this system is able to remove through the digital fingerprint. And we, it was, they were very yes or no type of questions specifically based on that version 10 of the ordinance that had been considered. So those key elements of that ordinance that the public was asked. These results are available on the city website. You can go on the main page. There's the little green box called Engage PTC. When you go through it, you'll see a lot of projects there and you'll need to look for short-term rentals. When you click on it, you can see there on the right-hand side, it says Public Opinion Survey. And you can click on that and find all these results that I am going to briefly summarize for you. Ninety-six percent of the respondents were Peachtree City residents and ninety-six percent do not own or operate a short-term rental. That means 4% of the responders do. And 70% responded that they do have in the past dated an STR. And I hope you don't mind if I abbreviate that and use STR instead of short-term rental all night. So when they were asked if they thought that a permit should be required, 78% said that yes, some form of regulation and permit should be required. When they asked how long that permit should respond, 53% said one year and then the remaining said two years or some other response. When they were asked the details of the ordinance, for example, should a guest house, pool house, or detached garage apartment be used as an STR? They were split. You see 52% said yes and 48% said no. When they were asked, though, if parties and special events should be allowed, an overwhelming majority said no, 84%. As well as, should STR users be required to park on paved areas off-street? Eighty-one percent said yes. And they also believe that garbage from STR, garbage cans, should be stored outside of public view. When asked if an occupational tax certificate should be required, 73% said yes. Just as a reminder, this is, sometimes gets called a business license. It's not technically a business license, but, but most people think of it as that. Should an STR be inspected by code enforcement and the fire marshal? And you have 69 and 70% of folks saying yes. Some of the last questions. Should notification of the short-term rental be sent to nearby properties? You'll see here that 46% said yes, all residents within 500 feet. 7% said all within 200 feet. 20% said yes, but just directly adjacent. So you'll see the majority said yes of some type and then 27% said no. And then also, should our STR operators keep a guest registry that has additional information beyond that which is collected by the web platforms? And 53% said no and with the other majority, or I'm sorry, the other remaining saying that yes or having some other comment. We also have purchased a monitoring contractor. They were called Hamari. They're now called Avenue Insights. And they have provided us with a dashboard in which we are able to get some list, information on the active listings. And I do want to distinguish here. You can have a site that is listed on multiple websites. So if your home is for rent, you can list on VRBO, Airbnb, et cetera. So when we say listings, that is all of the listings together. But when there's, so there's 123 active listings on those websites now, but only 65 individual properties. So that means that some of those properties are listed twice. That's how you get the 123. So 65 are active right now. I do want to note that that fluctuates seasonally. It fluctuated between December when we ran this report and March when we ran this report. And of that, 90% are single-family homes. 85% are the entire home, while 15% are private rooms. The average nightly rate of $214 and the average annual occupancy is 55%. This bar graph shows that when those current 65 properties were listed on some website at some point. So in, let's see. So you had fewer than five were listed in 2011, which is mostly when this contractor started scrubbing the internet for these sites. You can see the majority of those 65, somewhere between, we'll say 23, were listed in 2016. So the point of this graph is to show that these listings have been in existence for some time. We also had the police do an analysis of the calls for service to those listings, both the listings from the December or November report and the March report. And they looked at those properties over the last five years. They saw that there was a relatively low impact on police services for those. There was one case that involved theft and the PD was actually called by the tenant, the user of the STR for assistance. And then there were some noise complaints on the property, but it wasn't actually against the STR tenants. It was against the homeowner themselves. This does not include the Smoke Rise Party House. We did have multiple calls for service and PD can go into some details of those, but since we have hired, since we've adopted the noise ordinance, that number of calls for service at that property has dropped off. Then you've also asked for us to provide some information on, are these short-term rentals, are they congregated? Are there certain neighborhoods that are more impacted than others? And so this heat map shows all of those listings, so that's all of the website listings, that are current as of March 1st. And the percentage of units in a subdivision really varies because we have subdivisions of just, that just run the size from just a few lots all the way up to hundreds of lots. And so when you evaluate based on how many, the impact on an individual subdivision, it doesn't, it doesn't feel like you're comparing apples to apples. For example, there are two short-term rentals currently listed in Interlochen, which is 1.87% of the 107 lots. But there's also two short-term rentals listed on North Peachtree Estates, which is 14% or over 14% because there's only 14 lots in that subdivision. And there is one that's not in a subdivision at all, off of Robinson Road. There are two or more active STRs in those 10 neighborhoods. And I like to show that it's of all housing types. You know, whether it's cluster homes or large homes, single rooms to full houses, they are in every kind of neighborhood. It's not a particular demographic that is affected one way more than the other. So that is the additional information that we have been able to gather for you. I'm happy to answer any questions you have moving forward.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions? Laura, do you want to start out with a comment today?
Yes, I did. Thanks, Kim. Just, I wanted to let everyone know I have a conflict of interest on this issue, unfortunately. I have operated a short-term rental in the past when consulting with our city attorney Ted Meecker. He has advised me to recuse myself. So Ted, if you wanted to add anything to this.
Well, and right now, it's more out of an abundance of caution. I think depending on what's in the ordinance in terms of restrictions on numbers and some others, there's the potential that you will be able to participate later. And certainly tonight, as an owner and operator, you can provide some of your background information to the other council members. But in terms of weighing in on some of the different regulations that are being proposed, I would tread those waters very carefully. But again, a lot of it's going to depend on where council goes with this going forward. And depending on it, maybe you will hopefully be able to participate. I always hate recommending somebody not do so.
Thank you. Could we, would it be all right if I ask Chief Moon for some clarification on the, I see one theft on the previous slide, Robin, that you had? There you go. One theft in 13 years is what I think I'm hearing. Five years. One theft in five years. And can we get clarification on the Smoke Rise Party House once and for all? I was not aware that that was a short-term rental. And maybe you can help us understand that whole situation, which kind of kicked a lot of this conversation off.
From the period of especially around 2020 to 2022, we had 10 calls for service at 612 Greystone Court. Nine of those calls were relating to the property being a short-term rental involved with those. We do understand from talking with some of the neighbors up there, they have a lot more issues that have occurred that they did not report to the police because they were referring retaliation or some sort of retribution should we got involved. So we did have the 10 calls there. The last two calls were in 2022 relating to the short-term rental.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is Greystone Court, boots referred to as the party home?
Yes, I believe that's what we're calling the party house and several other, had other nicknames on various sites as they were listing it.
Okay. With that, city council, do you have any questions so far for staff? I am interested in hearing from our citizens. We have, we had posted the citizen survey. The comments were really interesting, but they absolutely ran the gamut. We had hundreds and hundreds of comments and they ranged from, everything from, "These are great for the city. Don't overthink this," to "Do not let this happen." And it was pretty much evenly distributed. I really spent some time on it. So there you go, Peachtree City. I guess we're going to get a range of emotions on this topic. I am interested in opening this up to hearing from our citizens with certain understandings for tonight. We're interested in new and relevant information. We are unable to allow shouting out from the chairs because this is a recorded meeting and so the comments need to be on microphone. And so I will open this up at this time for public comment. And I encourage you, if you have an opinion on the matter, that you let us hear it. If I would have a show of hands, is there anybody who wishes to speak in opposition completely to short-term rentals? I see three. And I encourage you to go ahead and take the microphone at this time. We won't belabor the point, but I want to hear from you. So please start with your name and your neighborhood and take a minute to let us know what you have to say.
Excuse me, mayor, I have a question. Do you have a time limit that you'd like to provide?
I can put a two-minute time limit on it. That's what we'll do.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
From what you just said, you said you wanted to know who was in like complete opposition.
Yeah.
Are you asking for people who have some issues with specific things to stand up and speak in opposition?
I'll get to that next. How's that? We'll get to the nuances.
Madam Mayor, after as many times as we've seen this, I hope we're going to draw some conclusions tonight.
I hope we do too. Yes.
Glenn Valencia, I live in Smoke Rise. I lived on the street. Is this on? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I lived on the street of the, of the short-term rental. And a couple of things, a lot of people aren't here tonight because they're part of a homeowners association. And they think that they're protected because of that, but they're not. For one, the homeowners association docs may not cover that because they were, short-term rentals weren't a problem when they completed their docs. The other thing is, the ones that do have it in their docs, if somebody moves in, they still have to get them out, which means they've got a victim, they've got to spend money, they've got to get an attorney involved and that's going to cost them no telling how much. Because when we got this guy renting in our neighborhood, it took us a long time to get to the owner, who actually used to be a neighbor and explain what was going on. We finally met with him and showed him videos. After he saw the videos, he said, "I had no idea this was going on in my house." And he said, "I don't have any rights to get them out because I haven't been contracted with them. If I get them out, they're going to sue me." We convinced him into doing that. He was able to go to them and ask them to leave. They did hire an attorney. The two attorneys met and they, we basically did a deal where they were able to stay in for three more, three or four more months and let them work out their last few rentals. And now it's a long-term rental and we haven't heard a thing out of them since. Before that, we may want to go back and look at some of the, some of the things that happened there, but we had a lot of activity as far as break-ins during that time. And then after that, I haven't heard of any break-ins. And one of them was on our street. But I talked to several people that said that their houses were broken into during the time of the short-term rental because we were bringing in people that, that when you saw them drive up in their cars with their music and everything on, you just didn't feel comfortable and you knew that, that something could happen. I had to go and confront them several times and, without a policeman. And it got to the point where if the policeman had not shown up, I don't know what would have happened.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that. I will point out that home-
You know, we're only getting a few minutes to do this. I could talk about this for hours and tell you things that you would probably not believe, but I can, but we can show you on videos to show it. So anyway, two minutes is not long enough.
Thank you. I will point out that homeowners associations can and do prohibit short-term rentals for those properties that are in their associations. I think Crestwind is the latest example. Next, please.
Robin, wasn't this also sublet? This wasn't just a short-term rental?
The Greystone Court.
That is my understanding, is that the owner subletted to someone who then listed it, but not even on these brand names.
I understand, but there's a lot of sublets going on.
Right. And the last version of the ordinance prohibited subletting.
Yes.
Hey, good evening. My name is Susan Luciano and I too live on Greystone Court in Smoke Rise, immediately across the street from the said party house. I understand about folks who would like to rent their properties, bringing people in to get to know our city. I've heard all those types of arguments. Unless you live across the street or next door to a nightmare, you just don't know. We all moved here because we love the community. We love our neighbors. We get along. We are excited to be here. Some of our council members are new to the city and they felt so good about it that they wanted to do more for their community. We've been here for a long time. It's not about me. It's not about Greystone Court. It's about our community. It's about our neighbors. It's about their safety. It's about our children growing. We had to call Public Works multiple times. God bless them for getting signs on the golf cart path that said, "Golf carts only, no cars." We had cars zipping up the golf cart path. Children walked down with their dogs and their bikes. It was a nightmare. We were scared to death. We had many families who said, "I couldn't let my children out on the street." There was, there appeared to be prostitutes in our eyes. Much drug use, profanity. Our next-door neighbor had to move out. I personally was threatened by some of the inhabitants. Thank God for Chief Moon and her police who came to our rescue. We love our community and we want to keep it safe for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Hello, Corinne Key Hayes, Huntington Place.
Get closer to that so it's near.
Hello. I'm, I'm very sorry that you had to experience that. Unfortunately, I've not yet, but I can definitely see where this type of short-term rental could result in something like that in any one of our neighborhoods. And I'm, I'm disappointed that there was not an option on the survey to just say no. I understand that some people really want this to be a thing, but if we as a city have the option of just saying no short-term rentals, that is the right way to go about it. If we've spent almost two years on this process, that should tell us something, that there is no really good solution. We've looked at different percentages and different numbers and tried to come up with all sorts of various rules and regulations. And at the end of the day, there's no magic thing that will make short-term rentals conform to the community that we are. We are a residential community. Unfortunately, I think there is a lot of excitement about changing Peachtree City into a destination, a tourist attraction. We have spent almost a million dollars on the Convention and Visitors Bureau to bring people here, which is fine to have visitors. But at what expense? There is zoning for hotels. And if people need a place to stay for all sorts of important and legitimate reasons, we have zoning for that. Residential subdivisions are not the place for that in a small community like ours. And I would just encourage our community to decide that it's not worth the trouble that it has brought to us and that we can make decisions to keep our community a safe place for everyone and still welcome visitors in our hotels who are being supported with a million dollars of Convention Visitors Bureau dollars. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Ralph Hale, Crab Apple Woods.
You can pick the microphone up so you can speak in. There you go.
Okay, good. Ralph Hale, Crab Apple Woods. My concern is zoning in a neighborhood. Are you allowed to start a business? This is definitely a business. Airbnb is sold on the Stock Market Exchange. Are you allowed to start a motel in your neighborhood? These are small motels. It's the same thing. What kind of business? What does zoning say about business? I would say, my understanding is zoning for a residential neighborhood does not allow you to have a motel in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Claudia Eisenberg. I live in Cypress Point. We have a HOA that says no. We have no rental, short-term or long-term. We had a neighbor across the street. We thought something was going on with her neighborhood. We started researching. We found out we not only had one, but both of our neighbors across the street. One was a lady from India. She was advertising in some kind of India newspaper for, she was renting out rooms. The other lady was also, she was on VRBO as a bed and breakfast. So she was actually operating not only a motel, but she was operating a commercial kitchen. Now, yes, our HOA says no and we responded and she didn't challenge us. Both of them stopped, but it does happen. And when we went looking, I found over 200 between VRBO and Airbnb. This was 2018. I found all, over 200 listed just in Peachtree City alone. Now, you cannot go look today because they won't give you the address.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Marina Hutchinson. I live corner Greystone and Ashley Way. So I'm like six, seven, eight houses down from the party house. And when the party house once had a busload of people, like Susan said, it was scary to see what looked like prostitutes. One of the guys actually turned out to be a murderer who is now back in prison. My children were terrified and it's terrifying to have such a thing down the street. I agree with the gentleman that says motels and hotels are zoned for visitors. Our neighborhoods should not be where these people come. And if it happened to you, you would be terrified. So please do not do this to our city. I run an Airbnb down at the beach in Santa Rosa Beach and there I have some issues, but that's a beach place. That's for visitors. And I hate it for my neighbors because some have short-term rentals and some don't. But let me tell you, there are a lot of terrible people that do terrible things. They do it to your property and they will do it to the city. So please don't let this happen.
Thank you. Next, please. With that, I'll open it up. If anybody would like to share a suggestion, a comment, or anything else you'd like to make public, go ahead and, go ahead.
Is this the time where people do? You said that we're totally against?
I'll, that totally against, we're done with that? I'll open it up now for any further comments. Does anyone else have a comment they want to make? If anybody who would like to, if anyone has not come to the microphone yet on any topic related to short-term rental tonight and you would like to be heard, I encourage you to take the microphone.
Hello, I'm Kathy Valencia. I also lived on Greystone, but that is not my only experience with short-term rentals in Peachtree City or in this county. But let me tell you, I don't have a problem with all short-term rentals. I don't have a problem with short-term rentals in commercial, business areas and possibly, I'm not sure how Peachtree City does it, but possibly some mixed-use areas that are meant for business and some residential. I don't have a problem with any subdivision that has been designed from the get-go to be a short-term rental. For example, places at the beach. When you go and buy them, they tell you upfront, "This is a rental property. People will be renting short-term, long-term and so forth." If there's any place like that in Peachtree City, I do not have a problem. If when you moved in from the beginning, you knew that that was what you were going to have. I believe Pinewood Trilith is like that. I won't, I don't know for sure, but I believe that that is a place that was designed to be a rental place and you can live there or rent. And I also don't have some, I don't have a problem with some level of grandfathering in for good people who have done it right and obeyed the law, if that's what this council should decide to do. I don't have problems with those. I don't have problems with destination locations. What I do have problems with is that in Peachtree City, this city fought hard to have very small lot, lots. Fayette County had very big lot requirements back in the day, if you've ever been here as long as I have. And Peachtree City fought to have denser lots where people would be closer together. And because of that, it's not an exaggeration. Some people say when they've heard my stories that I'm exaggerating when I tell them what has happened in the county with some of our short-term rentals and what has happened in Peachtree City. It's not an exaggeration. Ask Atlanta, who's in desperate straits, Savannah, College Park, Roswell, New York, London, places that are suffering greatly because of the short-term rentals, taking the rental properties off the market. Big companies buying them, turning them into short-term rentals.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comment.
So that there are no houses left for ordinary people to buy. There's so much of a problem. Please don't let it get like that here.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Ben Thomas. I am a resident at Hip Pocket Road. I've lived in Peachtree City for about four years and my family and I, we have two girls. And we saved, we rented in Fairfield, and right when rates were going up, we were able to buy. And we're a single-income family. We own an Airbnb. It's part of our property. And because of the Airbnb, it's been able to help us do updates to the home. It's not a way for us to get ahead. It's, as you know, Hip Pocket is extremely old, one of the first streets in Peachtree City. And so we are, we've done a kitchen renovation. We've been able to buy a lawn mower to maintain the property. And as part of it, it's part of our job to make sure we usher in good people. A lot of these people are looking to live in Peachtree City, and there's no better place than to live in a residential zone. And so we have this opportunity to help these people, and in return, we're able to update our home and also give our children, put them in ballet here in Braylon. We've been able to pay for extracurricular things that we, as a single-income family, probably wouldn't be able to. I understand that regulation light is on the table. I just ask that you consider the regulations that you might put in will have a direct impact on our children. And a lot of these people here, they're not just single homes. They're attached to the home, and it's part of paying for the mortgage. It's part of updating their home. And so it's not a money-grubbing type activity. Maybe for some it might be for type of investment, but for us, it's very much putting back into the community. A lot of these people shop within Peachtree City. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name's Kathy Bobbs. I'm a Realtor for virtual properties. And from a Realtor's point of view, I sell Peachtree City because of the good schools, the residential area. The city was designed for children with our parks, our library. So I'm kind of against this whole B and B concept. Long-term rentals, I don't have a problem with, but B and Bs are just a little bit too much and overdone. Having cars and people coming in and out of the neighborhoods, it's not fair to people that buy in Peachtree City and are looking for that comfortable home. Because you lose that home concept with B and Bs in your neighborhood.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Laurel. I live off of Waterwood Bend. I have a very similar situation. I have two children. We purchased our home with the intention to, we have a basement, and that is where we Airbnb. And I've mentioned before that nobody is more concerned with who is in my home than I am. I only rent to people who I can trust, and that Airbnb has vetted with background checks as well. All that being said, I... I'm concerned because, well, like he mentioned on the PowerPoint, I didn't even see my property represented because, like I said, it's a basement. It's not a detached structure. It's not, I'm not renting the entire home. I also am just, I'm not well-versed in the law. I don't know anything about the law, but I do feel like I have property owners' rights, and I understand that I am not renting a motel, but I don't, I think that there's a lot of nuances that I know you guys are working so hard to get through. But it's just, I could be renting, I could be having my grandmother visit for two weeks, and what's the difference between that and a short-term rental if she, you know, there's so many nuances. And I really appreciate you guys going through them meticulously. I would cause some murmuring. And now I'm a little bit flustered, but I appreciate everything, and I lost my train of thought. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. No, no question. Do we have another comment?
Hi, I'm Maggie Samuel. I live in the Marks. I wasn't expecting to speak tonight, but I think we should absolutely have them. Sure, we need some regulation on it. But Peachtree City is a destination. We have golf cart paths. I, my friends come down to visit me from Pennsylvania all the time. Like, this is the place to be, to me. And we should be able to use our houses we want. We have property rights.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Lois Brettermeyer. I live in the Marks, okay? I have been renting, renting at my Airbnb for over 10 years. I have never had one incident, no police report, no disturbances. All my, all my neighbors know that I'm, that they're there. I keep a very low-key off-street parking on my own private driveway, all right? And one of the issues that I wanted to bring up, I'm sorry that you went through that, but short-term rentals are three days. You could get somebody that come in and buy that house and be a horror permanently. My short-term rentals leave in three days. Yours stay forever. And you have to get police and lawyers involved to get them out in disputes. I mean, you're pitting neighbors against each other, all right? It's just unheard of. There are other businesses in Peachtree City such as hair salons, daycares, dog walkers. So there's other businesses within the homes other than just short-term rentals, all right? And I wanted to let you know that the people that have come to my house are grandmothers and grandfathers and police, police coming here for programs for lie detector tests. I've had a veteran come pick up a service dog. I have, I have, you know, kids that... Personally, I don't have kids in my short-term rental. I limit that. I do not allow kids in my, and I only have adults in there screened before I even let them in before through short-term rentals. There are other things that we have to be concerned with in Peachtree City other than just what you feel about short-term rentals. What about the pedophiles? Do you know that there's 600 pedophiles registered in Peachtree City? And they're not an issue. They don't have any rules and regulations.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comment.
I do want to remind everyone, please, please direct all comments towards the mayor. Please, just a reminder, please direct all comments directly towards the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Robin, Robin. Several people said we've had, you said we had 65 properties. And yet several people stood up and said they have 200, 200-plus. Is that just because they're looking into different places?
So our contractor scrubs 80 websites for these. Keep in mind that some people will say they're in Peachtree City, but they're actually in Tyrone or something like that. So our contractor draws a line around the border, and if you're outside of that, it's not counted in those numbers.
Thank you for the clarification.
And what about the difference between being listed through a platform or not being listed through a platform?
So this contractor can, and I don't know of any provider who can scrub things that are on private websites. So if you just list your home and create a website for it, and somehow you're able to generate, no, these are the eight, the top 80 listed, like, and, and do... I do want to also mention that it does capture beds and, beds and breakfasts. Is that how you say it? So it does capture all of those, and actually through its initial scrub will capture even hotels, but they, they, they screen those out.
Thank you for the clarification.
Next, please.
Mike Murtaugh, the Terraces here in Peachtree City, of course. I want to thank the mayor, council, and staff for putting on this workshop first and foremost. It's been a long process, and I just want to put the sense of appreciation for the openness, okay? To allow citizens, like you said, this is our community, and we don't want to pit neighbor against neighbor. And that's the reason I first came to the microphone was the initial ordinance where it required, if you go through all the hoops and bound, you know, hoops and fire, and you get your permit, the city will notify your neighbors that you are short-term rental, like you are a pedophile. You are a convicted sex offender. And that just disturbed me, okay? So let me be clear about my background. I'm Mr. Switzerland here. I have no Airbnb. I used to run an Airbnb. I have an Airbnb up my street. I have long-term rentals, and I have midterm that don't fall under this ordinance. And I see your guys' point, and I see the other side's point. And we have to come together as a community on this topic. And I will tell you that my experience with my neighbors' Airbnb, with our own, people will say we are a destination. We are a destination, but for our families to get reunions, to first births, I'm telling you, people want to experience the neighborhood feel before they commit to coming to this beautiful hamlet of ours. And we have to provide that opportunity because I can tell you, a hotel will not provide that. And we can tell story after story on the positive side, and justice will balance out. And I just ask for calmer heads here, that there is a lot of ordinances on the books already. We have Chief Moon and her awesome team that are keeping our city safe from more than what we're talking about here, okay? So let's keep things in perspective about who we are, what we are as neighbors and our community as a whole. So thank you all.
Thank you. Next, please.
Monique Kamiski, Whitfield Farms off of Robinson Road. After 20 years of two quiet neighbors in my backyard in months, within three months of each other, I had two properties, one that went to Airbnb and one that went to a duplex rental. First weekend of the Airbnb, it was a blowout party with young people all out of town, multiple police visits that evening. But our neighbor came to us, as we were walking towards him the next morning, and said, "That will never happen again." And he's been wonderful about that, and they've had wonderful renters since then, all short-term, but mostly a month or so. I believe that they do need to be regulated. Fire, code enforcement. You can go through any neighborhood and you realize where the rental properties are, whether they're short-term rental or long-term rental. They do need to. I'm going to just end with one story. I met a couple. We were talking, and they were from out of town, and were staying in an Airbnb, whatever, of short-term rental in Peachtree City. They came in late in the evening, wanted to go outside at the back deck, see what was going on out there. They couldn't get out. The next morning, they did a little research, and every window and the outside back door had been nailed shut. And so I think we definitely need to have code enforcement, fire, and police to check out these properties to make sure that they are safe. Because had there been a fire, they would have no, had had no way to get out.
Thank you. Next, please. All right, last call. All right. With that, we'll move to city council consideration. I think, and again, this isn't our first rodeo. This is what, our fourth, fifth workshop? I think Peachtree City's goal is to strike a regulatory balance between assuring private property owners their rights while also protecting the fabric of our residential communities. STRs are here. As of July 2022, short-term rental owners started paying hotel motel tax that is returned to the city. I think in 2023, we took in $76,000 a year. Airbnb and other platforms do encourage owners to provide safety features such as fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, and carbon monoxide detectors, but Peachtree City has the opportunity, as our last commenter just shared, to require them. We also have the opportunity to require annual inspections from code enforcement and fire department. Creating a short-term rental permit program would call for every short-term rental owner, as we've discussed previously, to register with the city, have an annual inspection by code enforcement and the fire department, and pay an annual fee that covers the costs of these inspections. I would like to see us eliminate or prohibit those who host short-term rentals outside of platforms, but we can have a conversation about that. I don't know how that enforcement works. Permits would require, as the draft ordinance now stands, information such as property owner name, address, and local contact information for a person age 25 or older, it's currently 21, but our planning commission recommended 25, who must be within one hour travel time of the property 24 by 7. I envision that a short-term rental permit database would be accessible online through the city website, but again, we have not ironed out details of that. And Peachtree City has the opportunity to determine a maximum number of permits. Once again, homeowners associations can prohibit short-term rentals, and in fact, many of them do. So council, I would draw your attention to the latest short-term rental ordinance highlights that we have. It's in the form of a list that we received that you have on the dais. And what we'll do is see what we agree upon and hopefully give staff some solid direction by the end of the evening.
Madam Mayor, can I interject?
Please do.
A comment? This workshop tonight is for everybody to listen in because there'll be pros and there'll be cons. There'll be regulations that'll be put out there. There'll be some negotiations on this, but we are here for what we were elected to do, which is to provide for the health, the safety, and the welfare of all the citizens, whether they're renters or non-renters. That's our job here. So I hope you can understand sometimes we're going to negotiate on some of these things, but we're here for those important factors that we all took an oath to adhere to.
All right. First, we're talking about, there was a mention earlier about possibly grandfathering in existing short-term rentals. I don't really have a handle on that. Councilmember Holland, you want to address that?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm for a grandfathering clause in our ordinances. This grandfathering clause will be for those people who have run a short-term rental for at least a year and who have paid their taxes on this. And with that, we'd like to have them be, if I can do this to the attorney here, somehow get them first in line, maybe under the first 60 days of opening up permits to allow those to be grandfathered in who are already existing citizens here, residents. These are our friends and our neighbors. We want them to be able to run their businesses and at the same time abide by all of the ordinances that we have. So I'm for a grandfathering clause for those people. I think, Robin, you said it's, did I hear you say 65 people or 65 were the total that we can find at this point?
Active listings? Active listings right now. So they go, sometimes people will kind of turn them off for a few months while they travel or have surgery or something.
Hey, can I, can I put you on the spot and say, in your estimation, where would the number lay for those that are active, inactive, people who are doing it in the city, whether they're registered or not registered on a platform? And I know it's putting you on the spot, but...
High numbers, 115, 120.
Okay. That's what I thought. That's what I had written down, about 120.
Comment?
Sure.
I believe, I concur, we ought to have a grandfathering clause or opportunity. But I think we need to make sure that there's adequate time for that people that are going to fill it out. You know, people go on vacations, you know, I don't have a short-term rental, but if I did and I happen to miss the date, and then all of a sudden I find out that people in front of me went ahead and got a short-term rental per, a permit while I was in Hawaii. So I think we have to lay out how long we're going to allow this period to be.
I put 60 days at this point, but I'm certainly open for discussion on that point.
And when you say grandfather, can you provide some clarity to us? Does that mean that they don't have to follow any of the rules?
Oh, no, 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 no. These are the, no, they're still going to have to, if I, if I, if I can. Let me just read a couple of my notes here because that'll clarify your, your position there. As I said, they have had to, have had a rental for a year in Peachtree City. They have had to pay taxes. They should have kept a guest register because our police department would appreciate that. I would like them to obtain upper occupational license, but they're going to get a permit anyway, and they're going to be paying fees for that. They will be following whatever is in the ordinance and whatever we put in the ordinance. We don't want it to be onerous, but we want protection for all of our citizens, but they will be required to follow that ordinance. And I put in my notes that as long as they can produce that they've... And I put in my notes that as long as they can produce that they've done some of these things, like ran a, a business for at least a year and paid their taxes, we should give them a process of six, the first 60 days would be for those citizens and owners in the city to come forward and get their permits first.
Understand. So it's like a priority.
That's kind of, that's some of the things that I've written down in my notes. I'd like other people to comment.
So what I'm hearing is adhering to the same set of permit requirements, but having priority since we might just put a cap on the total number, that they would have priority. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, exactly. We haven't cut and got to the, we haven't gotten to the cap yet. But that's something certainly we need to talk about. And I'd love to hear from some of the other people about maybe a...
And I'd love to speak.
What's that?
And I'd love to speak.
Stick your thumb in your mouth.
Yeah. I, I agree. I think that, first of all, some short term renters or rental operators are excellent operators and a handful may not have been. And I think we're seeing a lot of people who have very definite opinions, me included. There are communities that are banning short term rentals completely. And I don't necessarily think that we need to go that far. Maybe we do, but maybe we don't. But I like the idea of having a specific number that we're going to go up to. And I think that offering to the current people who can prove that they've been operating and operating well and letting them get in line first is the appropriate way to approach this. So I agree with what Clint has proposed, basically saying, if we open it up, and maybe we need to do it for 90 days because like what Frank said, may be true. Maybe we need a little bit more time for them to gather their stuff and get their applications in. But I think the first whole tranche of applicants should only be those people who have operated a short term rental. Let's take care of the people who are living and relying on that and can demonstrate that first. And if that takes us up to the limit, and you might want to hurry with your paperwork just in case there really are 200 short term rentals and we say, oh, we can only have 120. So you may not want to dilly-dally around, you might want to get your paperwork in. But I think that having the people demonstrate they've been good operators, then they should be the first ones in line.
I can add to that one more sentence. These are our friends and our neighbors. And if they've been running it successfully, you ought to be happy for them. Come forward and get your permit is what I say.
All right. I'm for that, Mr. Holland. I mean, Mr. Distadio.
My only co, extra comment is that we're covered to be able to do this, right Ted?
I believe we are. I'm curious about how we determine who's done it previously and who hasn't.
My concern would be that if we turn around and we give out 50 or 60 or whatever the limit's going to be, someone walks in the door and we say, oh, sorry, we don't have enough permits for you. That permit, that person may be really upset because they fit all the bill and yet they didn't get there in time. And, and that's, we're going to be covered under that, right? It just seems to me that's a little unfair.
So far, cities and counties have fared well in court on both loose short term regulations and stringent ones. Most recent one being New Orleans, just in the last week. So, yes, I believe we can limit the number. I don't have an issue with the grandfathering. The only, two, two issues I have, one, and I might be nitpicking. When we reference our friends and neighbors, understand that there may be an out of state homeowner who owns a property in Peachtree City that's been operating in Airbnb. We don't regulate the use of property based on where that person lives, whether it's a corporation or an individual or an LLC or anything else. Or whether they're a Georgia resident or an Alabama resident or North Carolina or wherever. So we can't look at that issue, in my, in my opinion. The other issue again is what I said a minute ago. We will have to figure out the best way for a person to establish that they've been operating for the required time period. And it's clear, I mean, we haven't issued permits previously, so it's not like we can go back and look at something else that we did. Whether it's their records, evidences of agreements, listings, whatever, they, there should be a way for them to do it. I'm just, especially the private people who, private owners who have not listed on Airbnb or VRBO or other sites or depending on what they've done, that we may run into some issues there that I'm slightly concerned about.
What about, what if they came forward and they've said, look, we paid our, we paid our taxes?
Hotel motel?
Those are easy.
And those are easy.
Those are the easy ones.
Right.
Are you talking hotel motel tax?
Either one, hotel or income tax. They have to claim it on their income tax, right? They got to do that too.
Okay.
So there's ways of finding it out.
There's ways of finding it out, yes. And I don't know that the lodging tax, when did that go into effect, 21 or 22?
22.
Yes. So that's only been in play for a short period of time.
Well, that's been in play for, since July 1 of 2022.
But you may have had some others that have been operating even longer. I mean, it sort of depends on how far back we want to go.
So that's the question, Mr. Holland. A year, operate, having been in operation one year or more have priority?
Yeah, one year or more. That's a priority.
We'll give them 60 days.
Yep. Well, 60 days, and I heard Frank say maybe a bit longer.
Well, Frank thought it should be longer in case people...
60 days is what I put in there. I'm okay with 60, but okay with 60.
Yeah, I, you know.
I'm okay with 60. I just don't want to cut people off.
I, I hear you. I'd like to also, if I, if you don't mind, Madam Mayor, I'd like to bring in the, the city manager and he's got experience that maybe he can opine on, are we looking at the right thing with grandfathering and hear from your experience?
Yeah, definite. Now I'm on. Okay, thank you. So yes, this is definitely a way that you can handle this. The aspect of the 60 or 90 days, depending on the volume of permits that we're going to be issuing. So if you keep it, let's just say the number is 60 and I'm not saying that's the number, but if that's the number that you put the cap on, then we would have to figure out from a staff perspective on how we would handle the processing of those 60 applications and the verification of that data. I wouldn't want to run, you know, a very intensive process that might take 60 days just to get 60 days, 60 people in the, if you, you see what I'm saying? Because they need to go, station their information and kind of be issued a number. And maybe that's something internally that we can do. You know, have a, have a specific number that somebody gets so you know you're, you're in line if that's the way we want to go. But that regist, that registration process and actually going through and getting the, the occupational tax license and then applying for the permit and all that other stuff, you know, is certainly doable. I just want to make sure that we're doing it in a timeframe that is in that 60 or 90 day window.
Did I capture everything?
I think so. I think, we're good with that.
Maybe what you can do is they can come in and just get a, some sort of a, a number from the city. It says, okay, I got here.
Our, our, I was actually ready to go in November. So we've got it all, our software is all set up and you get a number automatically when you apply.
Even if they don't have all their paperwork?
Yeah, so they would just be issued that number or that spot in the line and then when the paperwork is turned in.
Good.
Can I ask another question? Should we, how many, how many applications do you feel that city staff can process in a month? Because at one point in time, and before you answer, sorry, Robin. Let me ask the second part before you answer the first part. I, I know at one point we were talking about having them all renew at the same time and then there was a discussion of spreading them out. And that's kind of where I'm going with this.
It's inspections, you know, doing 120 inspections.
Right. So should, should we, regardless of how many people come forward in the first 60 days, should we make it known that we're going to be able to process 25 or 30 in a month or whatever that magic number might be to give them an idea? Because we don't want them all to be approved the same month and renewed the same month the next year, which burdens staff unnecessarily. So...
What I would ask is that we open it up and we see what we get. And then maybe day 30, I come back to you all and kind of give you a briefing and have a better understanding of maybe what some of the roadblocks are or if there are delays. It may take somebody, especially if they're out of state, you know, we do a background check. Well, we can do a background check relatively easy if they're in state. But if they're out of state, that can take a while. And so those are the kinds of things that we may get. And once we kind of open this up, have a better understanding of what those issues are. So I wouldn't wait till day 60 to say, oh my gosh, we have a problem.
Could you, could...
Just a second. Does that answer your question? Is that reasonable?
To me, yeah, that sounds very reasonable. And the flip side of it might be, we don't start taking applications from others beyond...
Well, and I imagine...
I want everybody to understand, although we're saying grandfather, of course, that's just acknowledging that you've been operating, not like you're going to automatically get your permit tomorrow. So, you know, everybody's still going to have to go through the fire inspection, the background check, everything. So, yeah, that's, if that's going to spread it out, but let's, maybe we need to write into the whole thing that we don't take any applications until we've, new applicants, until after we've processed all of the people that we're calling grandfathering.
I think it's reasonable to leave, I think it's reasonable to leave that up to staff.
Yep.
That's what I would, so what we have, I do recommend is that we, in the ordinance, we're very clear, even if you've had one, you need a permit. And you need to apply for a permit within 30 days of adoption of this ordinance or 60 days or 90 days, whatever it is. But then the actual commitment to how many we will be able to process and then also when will we open it up to all of the new applicants? I don't believe that that has to be written in the ordinance. I think that that can be a policy decision made by you all, unless I hear otherwise.
That's very reasonable. I, I do have one more question for you. And maybe it will bring in the fellows in the white shirts behind you there, the fire department. Are we going to put a burden on them if we get a whole bunch in in one month? They've still got to do, you know, all of the checks and everything. There's going to be a lot of work on their part.
Oh, yeah.
So we want to make sure we don't, we give them the opportunity to go and do their, their part of their business.
Yeah, one of the reasons that, when I gave you a cost estimate, I honestly assumed we were going to have to hire our third party inspectors of some, either it's part time or just an hourly contract through one of the many providers in the local area because the fact that there's just two fire marshal inspectors in the city. But maybe Jeff can opine on that issue too.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think what we've said is when the applicants come in and then we have them and we have a line, we will process them as quickly as possible. I, I don't know if an inspection, it's going to depend on the size of the home, the si, the size of the rentable property. You know, if, if you're only renting part of a home or you're renting a little, you know, two bedroom, one bath home, it's going to take a lot less time for us to, to inspect than say something like the party house and, and smoke rides will take us longer to inspect. So I think that we will just, you know, we'll be able to process through the, the inspections in order as they come. I, I just think it's probably not realistic to promise that we will have all these per, applications done in a month or two months, but we will work them as quick as possible. And then obviously, it's not just going to be our inspection, there's going to be building inspections too or code enforcement inspections also. But, but I, I mean, if you're looking at 65 total, my inspectors do 1,400 to 1,500 commercial business inspections every year. So an extra 65 or 100 inspections is not going to be outrageous to us. But it is going to take us time. But, but I, I don't want to try to put a, you know, a number or a timeframe on it. But, but I think it would be reasonable. I would think we should be able to get to most of them within the first 60 days.
Wow, there's insight for it.
That's, that's the reason why we asked those questions.
Madam Mayor, just so I can have some clarification. So I, I need to understand that during this prioritization or grandfathering in process where it could be up to 90 days, until somebody has actually issued a permit, does that mean that they're not allowed to rent their vacation rental during that period of time?
Yeah, that's a great question. How to best handle that? We want to get everyone on board. That's the goal. So this, the six...
I would suggest a phasing in period. I mean, during that initial 90 day period, I would probably allow people to operate and understand that after that 90 days, they better have their permits in hand and at that point in time, you'll have to have a permit to go forward.
Is that workable, Bob?
So it is. I just want to make sure that we're, we're accounting for that information and, you know, with, that everybody has an opportunity to get their information submitted on a reasonable time period. And I, I would hate to put a, a situation together that impacts the folks that are currently doing this by saying you have to wait 90 days in order to get your permit from the inspections, you know, to continue operating what we're working on putting together regulation for.
If we're going to have to monitor that if we're on day 30 and there's a backlog of applications and it looks like it's going to extend, then we may have to consider some sort of an intermediate measure.
I see.
Okay with it?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, all right. I'm actually very happy about that. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Holland. I'll continue down the list that we all have in front of us. Permits required, yes, whether you're grandfathered or prioritized or otherwise starting a new short term rental, a permit will be required, one for each property with an annual renewal. That takes care of the next two on the list. Are we good so far, council?
Yes.
Yes.
Primary residence requirement, no. As the ordinance currently stand, you don't have to be living in the, in the residence. Whole house rental permitted, yes, it is. A short term rental period is defined as between one day and up to 30 days. Can you use guest house or other detached structure, we call them structure, we call them ADUs? The answer is no. That means a pool house stays a pool house, a mother in law suite stays a mother in law suite.
So as you're reading through these items, is, am I to understand that if there's no objection, that everybody is supportive of that?
I'll, I'll try and do a better job of being clear on each one as we go.
I, I wouldn't phrase it like that, that everybody is supportive. I'd phrase it that as it currently, there's at least nobody wanting to see that provision changed.
So are we good so far? Nobody wants to see the provisions changed as we've gone through, through ADUs? Can you use guest house or other detached structure? The answer is no.
I'm good. I'm good.
I'm okay.
All right, moving on. Subleasing allowed? No, subleasing is not allowed. Council?
I agree.
I agree.
Maximum in the city, we will put a cap on it. And the suggestion to date is 1.5% of all of our number of households per the tax assessor, which currently would stand at approximately 189 citywide. Council?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to suggest that we drop that to just 1%. Make it a maximum of 120. If the number, if the number of rentals in the city is pretty much 115 to 120 right now, that's really going to incorporate everybody who's currently operating. And I think that that's where we should end.
I don't agree. The reason I say that is because we've heard already that we haven't had that many problems. In fact, we haven't had any problems really. So what if we have 150 or 100? Seems to me we ought to keep it, we ought to keep it at the 1.5%.
Councilmember Holland?
Yeah, I want to, I'm going to get a, when Bob finishes, I want to ask you to have a question.
Hold on a minute.
We're both coughing and clearing our throats up here today.
And while, while we're waiting, Councilmember Holland, I will say that I would be comfortable with 1.5%.
Ted, are we going, Ted, are we going to be getting into an issue where is 100 okay? Are we going to get a lawsuit thrown? Well, why isn't 101 okay if 100's okay? Are we going to get ourselves in trouble if we put a number out there or a percentage out there? And I just need some clarification as to whether or not that's going to get us into some...
If I could predict when a lawsuit is coming, there's no con, no telling the amount of money I would have made by now.
Ted, I would, Ted, comment?
I, I don't know that I have a lot of concerns with having a cap of some sort. Where you draw that line, I mean, councils draw lines all the time. Where does commercial zoning end and residential zoning stop or start? So as long as it's rationally related toward your overall purpose of maintaining the residential character of the areas, then I could, I feel like we'd be in a defensible position.
Okay.
Ted, my, my comment on that is that I still go back to the fact that I don't want to cut somebody off just because they didn't make the timeframe where they didn't hit the, he's number 200. We said they're only going to have 105. We said they're only going to have a hundred-and-five or two-hundred-and-one. I mean, if they, if they meet all the requirements that Clint's laid out about paying their taxes, have had it for so long, have never had a problem with it, have all the permits, then why do we want to put a cap on it?
I don't vote.
That's, that's...
Okay.
The question to me was, could we legally do it? And I believe we could. Whether you do it or not, that's the decision of council.
So I, I'll jump in on this one, because I do get to vote. I, I think, every now and then. I think that we should set a specific number. We can always change that specific number in the future.
That's right.
I think, right now, we have reason to believe that we have protection of the residential neighborhoods. I think if we find out, well, there's really only sixty people that are going to come forward and get permitted or whatever, then that's going to broadcast to the whole wild, wide, short-term rental investment world. Come here, we have all these options for you. That's not what I want to do. I don't want us to end up being a target for the short-term rental investors that are only going to be looking at picking up houses to make a lot of money. That's going to degrade our residential neighborhoods. Right now, and, and I know people were speaking about property owners' rights. Well, property owners have a right to use their property the way it's zoned. Residential property is to be used for residential use. This is really putting out an allowance for a commercial operation in a residential neighborhood. And I think that if we're going to do this at all, it needs to be highly regulated and at a very low number. We're seeing so many communities around the country that are being absolutely decimated by short-term rentals. And I think that it's better to make the mistake in the early-on stages of enacting this by being really strict, very regulated, and very minimal as far as what we'll tolerate. I think if we can, if we can put the people who've been doing things right and complying and let them continue to operate, I'm, I'm okay with that.
What's your number, Ms. Brown?
My number is a hundred-and-twenty.
Which is what percentage?
Yeah, how was that arrived?
One percent. That's one percent.
Is that correct, or?
And that can be changed at a future date.
One-point-five percent can be changed also at a later date.
So can one percent.
Depending on how these registrations come in, that would...
Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question? So I, I'm, I need some further information on the original concept of allowing sixty-five, what that number was that we had listed on the platform.
Sixty-five.
There was a number that was originally said that we would give this grandfathering or preferential treatment to the first sixty-five people. And now we're talking about a cap. So are we talking about the number being either one percent or one-point-five percent? And then we're giving all of those hundred-and-twenty, or whatever that number comes out to be, this preferential treatment to get their permits in?
To be clear, I think we're not clear on exactly how many short-term rentals will come in as I've been operating for one year, and I can prove it. I think we don't know that number. And so, that being said, the cap would be maximum. Once that's done, and the prioritization has been completed, then we have an additional, whatever it is, ninety, thirty days for any other short-term rental applications to come in. Either I'm a new host, or I had operated less than one year. But the aggregate, the total, would not exceed this cap that we're talking about. Does that answer your question?
So in other words, you have a cap of one-twenty. I'll try to play this in real numbers. And let's say you have ninety that come in and can demonstrate they've been in operation for at least a year. That would leave thirty available permits for new short-term rentals.
Correct.
Yep, correct.
Or those people who couldn't prove the requirements with, that we established. And so maybe they may have applied, but they get turned down, and so the permit is not issued. Maybe they didn't have the, maybe they weren't paying the motel tax, or maybe they weren't, they don't have whatever proof. So let them get back in line again. It doesn't mean that we are, you know, kicking them to the curb.
No, they'd be deemed a new short-term rental.
Correct.
Yeah, that's why I was...
I, I think I heard...
Madam Mayor, I think...
Mr. DiStadia?
I think when you started out, we were talking about one-point-five percent of all the residential...
Right.
Not the number of units we have now.
No, about one-point-five percent of the number of households, which is in the neighborhood of twelve-thousand-six-hundred.
So the old ordinance was written, it would be based on the tax assessor that they give to us every year. It's called a consolidation and evaluation of digest. And they list out, our, the la- last one that came out from your last appraisal, thirteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-three residential structures. So one-point-five percent is two-hundred, one percent is a hundred-and-thirty-three. So I, I like to base it on...
Numbers.
This is one source, as opposed to, you know, household from the census, which can be...
Well, and that's what, no, I agree with you, but it also, if you set a hard cap, then you're not... Because in your example there, you would have allowed so many permits last year. With new residential structures, one percent is now a higher number this year.
Right.
So there would then be the ability to, in other words, the total number of SDR permits would conceivably increase every year.
Assuming there's new residential stuff, which, at this point... But I did hear you, maybe I heard it wrong, Robin. I did hear you say, to the best of your ability and your estimate, there's probably between a hundred and a hundred-and-twenty. I think right now.
I mean, if I was spitballing...
We don't know yet.
That was your best bet as, as someone who follows this. Okay, just wanted to make sure I heard it correctly.
I would, I would, I would stand at one-point-five percent.
I would stand at one.
Mr. Holland, I mean, Mr. DiStadia?
Based upon the numbers she's saying here, I can live with one-point-five percent.
Mr. Holland?
And you know, I'm, I'm in favor of the one percent. And the reason why is it does take into account all of the, the people who are, and maybe potentially are homeowners, excuse me, short-term rental owners here in the city.
Yeah, we can't pass notes at a public meeting.
That's good, no, sorry, I'm new.
Please, please don't hand anything to the council members on the dais. Thank you.
So, finish my point. If, if a hundred and, a hundred, or a hundred-and-twenty takes care of all of our citizens and all of their, our, our needs in short-term rental, why don't we use that as the first go-round, whatever number that is?
Man, I know I'm right.
And what I'm hearing from you, it's about a hundred-and-twenty.
She just told you that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the best estimate you had.
Ms. Brown?
The one-point-five percent was a, a number that was established by the prior council. Several of the members of the prior council are no longer on the council. I disagree with that number. I think it should be less. We can always change it to a higher number later. I think we should go with, the fact that Robin has reason to believe, reason, and let's just say reason, no proof, to believe that a hundred-and-fifteen to a hundred-and-twenty would cover everybody who's currently operating. If we go with the one percent, one percent would be a hundred-and-thirty-three. So everybody who's currently operating would be okay, or should be. Whether they have their proof and can get in under the first preference, or whether they have to come back and get classified as a new one, all their paperwork is going to be done. They just have to resubmit it. But that would at least take care of everybody that we have, and not open it wide for a massive amount of investments. Which is, which is what I really want to hold off on.
I hear you. There's a balance to be found in the middle here. Mr. DiStadia, I could go with the one percent, and I'll take you at your word that we can reevaluate that number as we see how these registrations, how these permit applications come in. What do you think?
I, I think so.
I'm fine with that. I, I object with this comment that you have. We, we got that number by the prior council. It's still the council of Peachtree City, whether they get it to us or we...
I understand, but it's been hashed out for the last two years.
I'm fine with it.
In any case, we'll go with...
I'm along with that, too.
We'll go with one percent. All right, thank you. And are we in agreement, counsel?
One percent.
Thank you. Parties or special events permitted? No, they are not. Counsel, do you agree with that?
Yes.
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 Agreed. Keep a guest register? I, I have a question about the, a guest registry. I just have a question about the legality of keeping that document. And is it used for police purposes? Is it used for anyone's purposes?
It is common for hotel operators to maintain a guest registry. It would be a legitimate purpose to require that to be kept. The issue that's been raised in a Los Angeles case a couple of years ago was the police department's ability to demand it immediately without probable cause. We have reworded the ordinance in its most recent version to include either exigent circumstances, which is always an exception for a search, or the obtaining of a search warrant in order to obtain that guest registry. Of course, the operator is always free to voluntarily provide that registry to the police department. So from a legal standpoint, we're in good shape.
Thank you. Now I understand. I agree with that, counsel?
Now, what's going to be contained in the guest registry is the question.
Per the last ordinance, it was the date of the arrival, their, their names, their current resident address, and a description of, a description and license plate number of the vehicle they are using.
Now, is that going to include all vehicles who show up on-site? Or is it just going to be for the person who establishes the rental?
It's guest.
I mean, it's, it's who is, because when you, when you register on S, when you register to rent one of these, you have to list the name and ages of your guest.
Right.
So I would just, I mean, I'm thinking, I don't, I can't predict everybody having a guest come by and drive by. If my aunt were to come by, I don't know if I would have thought of that by renting when I was making the reservation.
Right.
So the guest? The registered guest, is that what I heard?
Frank, you want to talk? Go ahead.
I was just going to say that. Every time I've ever gone into a hotel, I don't put down, other than my kids, I don't put down everybody that's with me. So I think it ought to be the person that's renting.
Wouldn't...
Agreed? Mr. Holland?
Yeah, I agree. Just the person that's registering this, and I do like what the legal counsel gave us there. They're just not something that can be automatically go into somebody's house and say, you're renting, I want to see all your guest registry. I would think the, the things that you said, Ted, are important, that you've got to either have probable cause of some type to go in there and get that information. You just can't go get it. Did I hear that correctly?
Again, the police department in that situation can always ask, and the, and the owner, and the owner can say, here it is. I mean, it's like any other search. Otherwise, exigent circumstances are a warrant.
Okay.
That's the way it works.
And we've got that in the ordinance, Robin? To protect both sides of this, the owners and the police, too.
Yes, we have Ted's language.
Thank you.
Thank you, so that's a yes.
Yes.
Counsel, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Requires a business license as we have it, it's a no. Counsel, agree?
I do.
I agree.
Now, wait a second. Are we talking occupational tax, or, I mean, business license?
The oc-tax is effectively our business license. It's the tax that we have on businesses based on their numbers of employees.
In essence, in SDR, our permit is going to be a business license in order to operate that venue.
If the permit is going to take the place of that, there's no need for the duplication, in my opinion.
In essence, it's...
But I do like occupational ta- taxes, but at the same time, let's not double-tax the people.
Exactly.
If that's true, what you're saying.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with the hotel motel tax that they're paying?
Correct.
So...
It still says collecting lodging tax.
We'll get there next.
Yeah, we're coming up, next.
But as far as requiring a business license, as what I consider to be redundant, the permit will prevail, the cost of the permit. Counsel, do you agree with all that?
I'm okay.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Thank you. Next is collect lodging tax. By this, we're talking about hotel motel tax. That's a definite yes, counsel?
Yes.
And so those private servers, by, I mean, once we find them, then we make them come into compliance with the ordinance, then they have to either get on board with one of these major brands, or they have to report quarterly their, their taxes to our front desk up here.
So you're saying that, I want to make sure I understand what you just said.
Yep.
They, effectively with this ordinance, everybody needs to be on a platform, because that's how hotel motel tax is paid.
I mean, we don't require it, but what we tell them is that they have to pay that tax. If they're on one of these major platforms, it's getting done for them. If they're not, then they have to come in and do it themselves.
So we're not requiring everybody to be on a platform?
That's a counsel, that's a council's decision, yeah?
I would...
Ted, want to weigh in on that? Do we have the right to require them to be on a major platform?
We're telling them how to...
I don't know that we have to, I don't know that we have the right to tell them how they have to advertise their operation.
I didn't think so.
But they have to do a, a return on a, what, monthly basis, I believe.
Is it monthly or...
I'll tell you, let me, let me add a little something, because I've been very public about the fact that I own an Airbnb in Michigan. I own a house in Michigan, and I Airbnb it out. Being on the platform has certain requirements. You are prohibited from parties. You provide background information, contact information for hosts and guests. And there is a, an element of the common market there that, that causes poor hosts or poor guests to not be able to advertise on that platform anymore, and not be able to do business. There is a very healthy set of checks and balances on the platforms, and my vote would be that it does keep an added measure of control and documentation.
Well, up to this point, it had not been discussed about requiring it.
Yeah.
But certainly, that does help us along, because it gives us an added insurance, or assurance, not really insurance, added assurance that certain things are going to happen and that the tax is going to be paid.
I, I think it matters, yeah.
They got to file something annual with us anyway, as part of their permit to show...
I will point out, I think this is the latest draft in section nine-seventeen dot six, application for a permit, item A-ten. It does say, an affidavit swearing to use a platform that complies with state laws and collection of appropriate sales and lodging taxes. I see it in there, I would keep it in there, counsel?
It's in there, yeah.
There we go.
That's the state requirement, that's the state...
That is the state requirement?
Yeah, I believe that the state has...
So they can do it on their own and pay a quarterly fee for the hotel motel then?
There's a difference between the state platform for collecting and paying the tax versus a platform for advertising your air, your short-term rental.
I would like to see, for all the reasons Ms. Brown just described, I would like to see a requirement that we have a...
Listed on the platform.
Short-term rental platform requirement.
Can I ask, and this is, this is perhaps the stupid question, but how much less is the operator going to make if they're also cutting in the platform as far as they have to pay the platform? How much goes to, is it going to be, cause a problem for the short-term rental owners?
I think not. As an owner, I would say not. I think it's, I, I don't remember the number.
Since I'm not an owner, I don't know.
I get it.
I'm not either.
It's, it's not prohibitive as an owner.
I will comb through the cases and see if there's, this issue's been addressed on requiring them to be registered through a particular advertising platform. I don't know that it's been addressed, but I'll see if it has. I do have some concerns, just because I'm not sure what the real governmental purpose is behind that requirement.
We don't identify which one, we just say they have to be online.
I think it's got to do with collecting the taxes.
Well, collecting the taxes through...
On the platform.
That's through the State Department of Revenue platform, I believe.
So the state law requires any platform to pay state taxes.
Right, okay.
And so, but if you have a bed and breakfast, for example, and you don't have, go through, I'm just going to use Airbnb as an example, then you have to use the state platform to pay your taxes, to register and pay your taxes. You can't just walk up to the planning department and give them a check.
Isn't that really a business decision? And should we be restricting a business decision whether I pay through A, or whether I pay it directly to the state? As long as I pay it, that's the most important thing.
That's one, that's one aspect to this conversation, but the other aspect is having a whole additional layer of checks and balances, in for, personal information on file for hosts and guests, a certain set of limitations, no party houses, you know, there are, Airbnb, for example, has rules about what you can do and how you can use your property.
And many of those rules are duplicated in version ten.
Yes, yes.
So that we wouldn't be relying on the Airbnb police to enforce their rules. We would be enforcing our rules.
Right, I, I would, I would keep that in.
Should, should we then identify which ones would be acceptable to us, or is that going too far?
Let me look into that.
Okay, okay.
Which platforms would be acceptable, you know, because...
That's, that's why I said I want to look into it, because I'm not sure if that would withstand a challenge.
Because part of the discussion that we're having, and part of the trouble identifying how many we have, is because quite a few of them may not be on any of the major platforms.
Right, that's, that's kind of what Robin was saying.
Whereas if we require everyone to be on a major platform of some sort, Whereas if we require everyone to be on a major platform of some sort, it would be easier for us to clearly identify who's out there.
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Question mark on that one?
I'm moving on down the list. Required to meet current fire and building codes.
Absolutely.
Uh, yes, and an annual inspection is required. Counsel?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, especially because we saw two people have to jump out a second-story window, just, what, two weeks ago, up in South Fulton County, and they both, both broke their backs.
Okay.
Okay. Moving on. There are two items, the next two items I do have a question on. One is off-street parking required, and the second is garbage storage requirements, which I think means out of view from the street. My question for staff is, are those requirements of all of us in Peachtree City, or are we targeting short-term rentals?
So I wouldn't say that we're targeting short-term rentals, we're trying to address the most.
Can we please just remember, this is recorded, and we need to be able to hear who's talking on the microphone. Thanks so much.
This is trying to address the most number of complaints that municipalities who regulate short-term rentals, that's one of their biggest complaints, is parking, noise, garbage. We have the noise ordinance, and so this would potentially address the parking issue and the garbage. But right now, if I roll my big blue monster out to the end of my driveway, there is nothing that requires me and the city ordinances to roll it back and put it back in my garage, although I do, because I'm a good neighbor.
But we do have a parking requirement.
No, you can park on the streets, we have, we have a handful of streets that you can't park on for various reasons, like industrial streets and whatever.
I understand that, but you can't pull up on the grass.
Ah, yes, that's correct.
But, but we allow street parking throughout Peachtree City.
We do allow street parking.
So.
Is it overnight street parking too?
Oh, yeah.
Sure. Okay. Wow.
I put my truck down there every now and then.
So these two that the mayor brought up are really not covered in our ordinances, and we're trying to cover them in this. And the only thing I'm saying is, are we targeting these people on their business? Do we do that to every bakery and every restaurant here in the city?
We do. We do require businesses to handle their garbage.
So this is really, since it is in the business category, then these are not an onerous requirement, is what I'm hearing.
Robin, what's it say about off-street parking? Just that there be off-street parking, or a certain amount of off-street?
That the users of the short-term rental may not park, have, it's a positive statement, have to park on the property on a paved surface. So basically, it's saying you can't park on the street.
So whereas if you have anybody that comes and sees you, and the number of vehicles exceed the amount that the driveway or parking area will hold, and they park in the street, then there would be technical non-compliance.
Yeah, and then we would cite them.
Because it's a business.
Because the ordinance would say that. I don't.
But, you know, it's funny, it's, if you have a party on the street, could be in my neighborhood, and twenty people coming to that, and it's a cookout in the backyard with family and friends, there's a lot of parking on the street. I've, I've seen it in my neighborhood, and I don't, you know, I don't know of anybody calling up and saying, "Please come and tow these cars away."
I will say that home-based occupations, the ordinance right now prohibits the visitors of home-based occupation to park on the street. So this is no different than any home-based occupation, the current ordinance is in the city.
All right, I, I would, I would stick with yes on both counts. Counsel?
Yes. On both counts.
I'm definitely a yes on the garbage. You don't want to have the trash cans down there. I'm a little concerned about the off-base parking, on, off-street parking, for what we talked about. I think that if you have people coming to your house and you need to have parking, they need to be on the, on a paved surface. But then after that, you got three people show up. I mean, I've had parties at my house, and I've had people fill up the driveway and then park on the street. I think they ought to be allowed to park on the street for the duration of the party.
So to be clear, our ordinance includes no parties, no party houses. There will be no parties allowed at short-term rentals. And the platforms also prohibit party houses.
I'm not talking about a party house.
Okay.
I mean, we have a Halloween party every year, and we've got more people coming to that than can fit in my driveway. So can't they park on the dri, on the street?
Yeah, you're not a business, Frank.
Okay, if I'm not a business, and that's good, then I'm fine.
You're fine. We all park in the street in Peachtree City, even overnight.
I think that's the truth, and although I, I'm not really fond of these two, I'll say yes.
City council majority has said yes?
I'm fine.
All right. Thank you to both. Notification to neighbors, it was calling for a U.S. Postal Service letter to be delivered to neighbors within a five-hundred-feet radius. I, I find that to be punitive and difficult to, impossible to enforce, and I would say we need to take that one out and make it a no.
I agree. I will tell you, I've changed my mind on this, and I've got to rely on the goodness of the neighbors that we have in this city. I know if I was a short-term rental person, I would tell my neighbors, I wouldn't need, I wouldn't need the city to, "Hey, I'm a big brother, I'm coming in to tell you what to do." I would go to my neighbor and I'd say, you know, "Susan, Charlie, we've got somebody in there." Okay. Suzanne, Charlie, we've got somebody in there, and I want you to be aware of it, and I'm telling you upfront, so you know exactly. I don't want the city to tell those people, so I would say, strike that out. That's where I stand on that.
All right.
I'd, I'd be okay with removing that. I, I'd like some notification to go out, because for zoning changes, you know, we send out notices for zoning changes. It's two hundred feet, correct?
Yes, ma'am. We had talked about making sure that this would be.
Searchable database.
Right.
And that's the one thing.
Through our city website, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, if we have the searchable, if we have the searchable database, then I think that the notices are not necessarily needed, but then we have to add in the searchable database for me to feel comfortable with saying.
I would agree.
So.
And I'll agree to that, too.
Because that way, no matter when or where, any citizen could go on the database and check and see if the house next door to them is a short-term rental.
So we'll just change, we'll strike the notice, and we'll just put that the city shall maintain.
Right.
A searchable database.
Good.
For the location of all permits.
Yep.
Thank you. Requires the local contact slash agent, yes, we have, and they're at least twenty-one years old. The planning commission.
I'm sorry, if we can please ask, if you'd like to have any sidebar conversations, if you can please go to the lobby, just to make sure that those who are watching at home are able to hear the council members as they speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine. Requires local contact agent, the planning commission, you remember this, planning commission had changed that to twenty-five years old, and I don't remember why.
It was about, there was some discussion about brain formulation and when cars can be rented. No, that's, there's science, there was science behind it.
A good conversation about it.
They want the cortex.
But then the, the other comment on the other side was, well, the state says you can be, you can literally be a property manager at age eighteen. So you've got the state law saying eighteen, and then you would have the city ordinance.
Counsel, I find twenty-one to be reasonable.
I agree. I would like to see it at twenty-five, only because, honestly, and all transparency, I wasn't very reliable when I was twenty-one years old.
All right, don't tell us any details, Mr. Holland.
That's all, just not reliable. I would prefer to have someone who's twenty-five, who's got a little bit more experience under their belt. That's just my opinion.
Councilmember Brown.
Can I live with it? I can live with it, if the rest of the council goes for that.
Councilmember Brown.
We can always change it if we have a disaster.
So is that a yes or a no?
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm thinking on it.
I could go with twenty-one.
I think we have enough to say twenty-one is passed.
Twenty-one?
I'll go with that, twenty-one. Reluctantly, I'd like that twenty-five, just because of my own personal experience on that.
Well, I was extremely mature at the age of twenty-one, but I was unique. What can I say?
Are we agreed, counsel, on twenty-one years old?
I would like to see twenty-five also, but.
I need a yes or a no.
Yes, I'm good with twenty-one. I was married when I was twenty-one.
I'm going to get overruled, then. Clint, what are you saying?
I, I'm looking here at my number. I put twenty-five down there, in all honesty, but I can also understand, we've, we've gone through a lot of these tonight, and sometimes you've got to say, you know, I got to negotiate on this one. I'll go with twenty-one.
All right. We'll go with twenty-one on that. Agent must be on-site within a certain amount of time, yes, within an hour. Short-term rental permit must be posted on-site, yes, I like the way the ordinance was written to include a lot of information about the rentals and the contact on-site. Fines for violation, huh, I, I'm not sure what violation means. Does that mean a neighbor complained? Does that mean, what does that mean, please?
It would have to be some kind of, they were not complying with the ordinance requirements.
Okay. And did the planning commission modify these numbers?
They preferred, so again, a range of opinions, but at the end of the day, they agreed to do, recommended a tiered system, so that it gradually got up to a thousand dollars, and I think it started.
Five hundred.
Yeah, five hundred.
Five hundred, seven fifty, one thousand.
That's what I have in my notes from the planning commission.
Counsel?
I'm okay with the tiered.
I'm okay with that.
I am too. Five hundred, seven fifty, one thousand.
Frank, you want to weigh in?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That's agreement by the majority of counsel, and then last item listed is.
Can I, can I interject one thing?
Yes, sir.
On the revoke for twenty-four months after the third, if you have a really egregious violation, and it's your, I hate to limit it.
Oh, so there is a section that allows basically the city manager to revoke any permit for some regulation.
Violation?
Yep. Any violation of this article. So he, he connect, I mean, he has to go through a process.
And there's an appeal process?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't limiting ourselves to requiring a third violation before.
The Coral Springs example.
Depending on the action. Okay, good, thank you.
We're good with that. And finally, application fees, uh, four hundred, and how was that number arrived at?
It was the cost for inspections, what we're, we're paying our third-party building inspectors, a hundred dollars an hour, it's what we charge for building permits. It was the cost of the background check. It was, we assumed the number of resident, the number of active units would, and then distributed evenly the cost of that annual monitoring pro, contract that we have. So we pay seven thousand dollars a year for this contractor. We assumed a hundred and, I think, twelve, or maybe a hundred and ten, units that would pay towards that seven thousand, and therefore, that came up with the four hundred and nine dollars, which we rounded down to four hundred.
And every year, then, four hundred dollars a year?
If we're going to require an inspection every year, I've got to pay them to do the inspection.
Do we have to have a background check every year?
I, I'm going to ask that we keep it down. Thank you.
Do we, do we need it every year? Maybe we should ask our chief. Chief Moon? For background checks on an annual? Do we need background checks on an annual basis for our citizens, who are going to be the majority of our people running?
Let me take a shot at that. I would say that it is up to councils to determination on whether you want to do a background check one, or if you want to do a background check annually. What, what are you looking for in the background check to determine the permit status of your residence? So, again, it's, it's on here, it's something that you all have to make that decision, if you want a background check to be done on, on these permits, and then if that background check is something that you would want to have information on going forward for the issuance of any permits.
It really does beg the question, if we do a background check, then what's our threshold? If you, if you were picked up for shoplifting, and you're a Peachtree City property owner, I mean, what's, what, what is it for? We have in the draft ordinance, consent, it's under section nine seventeen point six, application for permit, A four, consent by each applicant to undergo a criminal background check. Why would, why are, what is our rationale for that?
So the next section, it says that we won't issue it to any owner, operator, partner, blah, 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 that has interest, direct or indirect, that has been convicted or taken a plea of no low contender A within five years of a felony or any crime involving moral perpetude, or has been convicted or taken a plea of no low within two years of any misdemeanor in any state of the United States, or municipal, or county.
What section is that in?
Except traffic ordinance, except traffic offenses.
Thank you. What section are you in, Robin? I can't find that.
Point seven?
Yes, sir.
Okay. B, point seven. Counselor, comments?
It's not an apples-to-apples comparison, so I don't want to pretend that it is. We do require annual background checks for other licenses that we issue in the city. I just double-checked with Jasmine on that, and alcohol licenses being one of them. I mean, I, this is a special permit, so, again, though, I'm not going to say that operating in a short-term rental is the same as operating or distributing alcohol at a restaurant or bar in the city, but there, there's some precedent for requiring a background check for other things that we do on an annual basis.
I would suggest, it's the same owner, I would suggest one time upon original application, and not on an annual basis. It's the same owner.
I don't disagree with you on that, but I might add just a little twist on that. Mayor, I would say, once every five years or ten years, I mean, you never know what is going to happen, and maybe I'm just being a little overly cautious, so I can be talked into something else.
Yeah, then someone has to track that and monitor that and enforce that. I think that's beyond our realm.
I think I owe it to all the citizens to give them my, my perspective on that, so. Frank, you ready?
Hey, Mike, you want to go first, Frank? My twenty-one years in law enforcement tells me doing a background check doesn't do any harm. I go for the background check.
Annually?
Annually.
No, I disagree about annually. I think something at, less than that, three to five years is fine. I don't think people make that many changes every time.
I would do it one time initially to get us started, and then not have to put everyone through.
Absolutely, one time. First time to get their permit.
I would, I would do it first time to get your permit.
How about two years?
Again, then we have to monitor that and come back and revisit. Somebody has to track that. I would do it one time. Mr. Holland?
You know, most of our citizens are trustworthy individuals, and to my mind, anyway, I can go with one time. I can go with one time. Okay?
I believe I have council, council majority, Mr. Distadio? Mr. Holland?
Yep, yes.
One-time criminal background check upon initial application.
But I think I'd like to add one more thing. If they're going to be, going to be only a one time, I'd like to see the fees go down in year two and beyond.
Absolutely.
Renewal.
Yeah, we have to.
So whatever that, we don't need to charge the residents, that's whatever, it's a hundred bucks or whatever the cost is.
Regulatory fees can only be what it costs us to provide the licenses.
Fine, so we'll just adjust that down in year two. Okay, thank you.
And then I have a question about late application fee. What does that mean?
Well, that was when, and I'm, is that still in there? I'm sorry, that was when we had planned on doing it January first. So if that's still in there, I will remove that.
Okay. I believe that with this ordinance, the checks are in place that will prohibit, will prohibit the graystone court type of situation. I think this protects our owners and our guests and our neighborhoods and our residents. Counsel, do you want to have any last comments on this?
I have a question before I comment, if you don't mind. The question I have is probably going to be for both legal counsel and, and the police. If we have an intransigent, short-term rental owner who says, I'm not going to register, I'm gonna do it on my own, I don't care what you guys say in the law, we're gonna do it ourselves. And we don't know about that person, because they've decided to say, I'm gonna do it on my own. And they don't want to pay any fees or anything. And then a year from now, we find out through Robin's good work that, oh my gosh, one, two, three Maple Street is a short-term rental. How are we going to enforce that they comply with the law in this city?
You want me to take it, or you want to take it?
Yeah, well, I just want, I just want it on the record.
That person would be cited for operating a short-term rental without a permit.
Okay.
And they'd be here in municipal court.
Okay, so it's a matter of a court case for whatever appropriate fines there would be for that. And then they would be, obviously, then not be able to do a short-term rental if they've been doing it outside the law.
It'd be, I guess, a misdemeanor ordinance violation, which would keep them at least ineligible for a period of two years.
Okay. I'm okay with that answer.
All right.
Thank you very much for that.
I got a question for you before I say I'm okay with that. How much are they likely to be fined in that, for a misdemeanor? Versus, you know, because here's what I'm balancing. Is it easier to get penalized and ask for forgiveness? Or is it easier to pay the fee upfront?
I believe that the maximum fine under our charter is a thousand dollars, which is consistent with most misdemeanors under state law.
But if they've been operating for X number of months and earning money, and then they're gonna have to get charged a thousand dollars, is that penalty enough? Or is there something more that we're allowed to put into place that says, and you're gonna have to pay us X dollars extra, whatever, if we can demonstrate you were making money without that permit?
What we could do is, is, again, the fine would be limited by our charter to a thousand dollars. If they've been doing it, that is something that we could investigate and turn over the information to the Department of Revenue for unpaid hotel motel taxes.
Okay.
And there could be some determination made as to what is owed for those.
And you could also terminate the permit.
Well, they wouldn't have a permit in this case.
They don't have a permit.
I mean, if they want to come back in and get a permit, you could say no.
They, they would have some issues when they came for a full permit, yes.
Does that answer your question?
Should, should that be added in, though? I'm trying to, you know, when you write laws, and that's what this ordinance is, but when you write laws and somebody can figure out that there's a loophole, then they're gonna operate within that loophole, and you're gonna have to keep coming back over and over and over again. So I'm just asking these questions to say, is there something we want to add in there that puts some sort of a penalty, or says you'll never be able to operate? If you're operating without the permit, and we catch you, we're gonna do this, 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 and you're never gonna get a permit.
We could write in an ineligible ability provision, that if they're convicted of operating without a permit, they would not be eligible for a permit for a period of time, five, ten years.
Yeah. Because I, I mean, oh, right, I'm just saying, because a law without the teeth to hold it up isn't worth much.
That's why I brought up the enforcement part.
I'd, I'd be in favor of, in favor of writing the provision of what would happen.
And maybe if I could interject as well, you've put the tiered system in the five hundred, the seven fifty, and the thousand. We can write that citation every day we find they're in violation.
There you go.
So if they're doing it for seven days in a row, and we confirm, we can write a citation seven days in a row, and then by the time it gets to the court, I'm sure the municipal court judge will feel pretty unhappy with that, and he would take appropriate action as well.
Or if you execute a search warrant and find the, it had operated as an Airbnb for twenty-one days, then based on that evidence, you could technically issue twenty-one citations.
Yes.
Yeah. Is that in the ordinance as it stands now, Robin?
It is.
Okay.
That's our standard.
I'm good. Thank, thank you for the conversation.
Good?
Yep.
That'll work.
Okay. I, I have, I have a question for Jeff, for Mr. Thomet. In the ordinance, in the draft ordinance, is there the necessity of the fire extinguisher? I'm curious about the fire inspection. The fire extinguisher, smoke detectors, CO2 detectors, is that part of our inspection? And what do we require?
Madam Mayor, I don't have the copy with me, but I believe it was in the checklist that there were-
Sorry about that.
Yes, so in, in our checklist right now, what we have is an emergency guide, needs to be posted, emergency exits, phone numbers to call, items like that. Exit paths, making sure exits. Somebody made a comment earlier about doors being nailed shut. Those things would not be allowed, so we would check exits.
So do they have to make one of those maps? I mean, it's a kitchen.
I mean, correct, probably not, but, but we, like I said, and this is all up for, I mean, this is not a finalized checklist at this point. I think we can look at it, but, but things like emergency contact numbers and things, which I think we've already talked about being on the permit. Fire extinguishers would be just like any other business that operates in the state of Georgia. You have to have a tagged fire extinguisher. If you look around and see the ones that have the yellow tags that show that they've been inspected by a service company on an annual basis to make sure that they are functioning.
That's part of what this inspection is.
Yes, we would, well, we would check for the tag. The extinguisher would have to be serviced by a licensed service company.
So you have to hire someone separate? If you're an owner, you have to hire a separate company to come-
Correct. That, that, the, what, that is what all business owners in the state of Georgia have to do for their fire extinguishers. You can't just buy one at Home Depot and hang it on the wall. You have to, you have to have it serviced, typically twenty-five dollars per extinguisher. And we do have a distance on here of seventy-five foot travel distance to an extinguisher, which is, the fire code says you cannot be more than seventy-five feet away. So depending on the size of the home, you may need more than one. Upstairs, downstairs, for example. Smoke alarms, we have them for every level of the home, inside sleeping areas and outside of sleeping areas. So some of the older homes that do not have them in the bedrooms may have to get smoke alarms installed in the bedrooms.
Do they have to be connected?
Yes, the current fire code says they have to be interconnected. Those can be done wirelessly. There are models available that can be done wirelessly. Carbon monoxide alarms are required on each level of the home if the home uses natural gas as a fuel or propane as a fuel. So a total electric home would not need carbon monoxide detectors, but if you use natural gas or propane. And then we would have the extension cords not to be used as permanent wiring, you know, making sure things like appliances, refrigerators, et cetera, are not being plugged in, use extension cords. That, that is common fire safety code. And then also, on the exterior, there would be some rules concerning the location of grills, fire pits, et cetera, basically not close to the home, to combustible surfaces.
Thank you.
I, I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Windows, most specifically in basements.
Okay, so, so this is a part of the building inspector's inspection, but there is a definition for bedrooms. So any sleeping area in fire code needs to have two means of egress. So if you have a bedroom, it has to have a window. And those windows do have dimensions that are spelled out in the building code. I'm not, right off the top of my mind, I can't tell you, but a normal-sized window, not a basement-type window, you know, up high, that's very small. It has to be a normal-sized window that a body can fit through. And those windows do have to be operable and easily accessible. So another thing the building department would be looking for would be furniture placement in a bedroom. You cannot have a bed with a headboard against the window. The, the bed would have, the window would have to be accessible. So, so those, those would be things that they would look at. So if it's not a bedroom window, the window does not have to be operable. But, but the bedroom windows do have to be operable.
Is there, is there a requirement to have, like, those rolled downstairs from upstairs?
Not, not in the fire code that I'm aware of. You know, those would be options.
The two people in South Fulton County would have liked that.
Sure. Our recommendation is to sleep with bedroom doors closed, so that you're protected inside that bedroom. And as long as the window is open, you know, the fire department can rescue you from there or provide you safe haven.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I'm good for now.
I have a question, Bob. Do you need any clarification?
No, I think what we have, the information and going through the checklist was very helpful. And if we do have any clarification, we can go back and watch the video to make sure we have it, but I think we got it covered.
Counsel, thank you. Last, last comment.
You looking at me first?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay. First of all, are you going to be able to do this in a reasonable time? You're looking at maybe a month, or two weeks, or tomorrow?
Well, we'll have to kind of compile all this and see how it goes, but we'll definitely bring this back at a future council meeting, so you can vote it in, or, or not vote it in.
I, my only comments are somewhat personal. I put a lot of work into this, and did a lot of discussion. And tonight, I think we took a look at all the people that are affected by these, by the short-term rental, both the owners and the people who are not owners who are affected by this. And I believe personally, we've given everybody what I think is fair on both sides, for both those who have existing short-term rentals and those who do not have short-term rentals. We've given them that a grandfather clause. Great, for those who are doing business now. But we've also restricted the number that it's going to be in Peachtree City,